I would like to call this meeting to order. The camera is on. We are being recorded. So at this time, if we will stand for the prayer and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today, and your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Sensky, will you call the roll?
Ms. Haynes?
Here.
Mrs. Foglio? Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Ms. Holman?
Present.
Mrs. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Spielman? Mr. Roskowitz?
Here.
Mr. Timmanier?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Welch?
Here.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to excuse Ms. Foglio and Mr. Spielman from tonight's meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Haynes, second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? They will be excused by a five to zero vote. We have enough for a quorum, and we are meeting the requirements of the Sunshine Law. At this time, before we begin our business part of our meeting, we are going to have a special presentation. Our clerk, Ms. Stacy Sensky, has met the requirements from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks to be a certified municipal clerk, so we are going to have a presentation this evening. In joining us in that, we're very happy that our former clerk, Ms. Levett Henigan, will be with us tonight to do that. So if you would come to the front of the podium. I've received a letter from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. It says to John Roskowitz, Council President, Stacy Sensky, CMC of the City of Ashtrabula, has earned a designation of certified municipal clerk, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Excuse me. The IMC grants the CMC designation only to those municipal clerks who compete the demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contribution to their local governments, their community, and states. The International Institute of Municipal Clerk was founded in 1947, has 14,000 members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries. The mission of this global nonprofit corporation is to enhance the education opportunities and professional developments of its diverse membership. In light of the speed and drastic nature of change these days, lifelong learning is not only desirable, it is necessary for all in local government to keep pace with the growing demands and the changing needs of the citizens we serve. Your city, our city, can take immense pride in Stacy's educational accomplishments and the achievement of this milestone. On behalf of the IMC Board of Directors, I am honored to endorse the conferring of the CMC to Stacy Sensky, the CMC of the City of Ashtrabula. We share your pride in this achievement, and we applaud your support for the role that Stacy plays in your city. Sincerely, Sherri Pierce from the IMC, or the IMC President.
To President Roskowitz and the members of council, City Manager Timmanier, City Solicitor Cooper, and Finance Director Welch, and the viewing audience, good evening. I'm going to take a slightly different approach to this evening's presentation. I'd like to take you to the beginning of Stacy's career as our municipal clerk, to give you an overview of how Stacy reached this wonderful milestone in time. In 2019, Stacy was one of 19 applicants who answered the call to be considered the City of Ashtrabula's next Clerk of Council. You see, with much prayer, I believed that after 28 years of public service to the City of Ashtrabula in the position, it was time for me to pass the torch. As a Christian, I knew it was God who placed me in the position, whose profession I had never heard of previous to being approached to apply. I dug my heels in and literally learned from the ground up. I also knew when he was calling me home to spend more time with my husband in the ministry of the gospel. It was a three-year process. Nineteen applicants became two, and Stacy was chosen. On September 3, 2019, she began making the office of the City Council and the Clerk of Council located on the second floor of this building her home. She and I spent three months together during the transition. The municipal clerk is one of many positions in local government. It is the oldest public servant position along with the tax collector. The occupation is as diverse as municipalities they serve. Women and men who hold the position must be well-rounded, organized, enjoy serving others, and be or become educated in various disciplines. When Stacy was hired, she was constantly told she had big shoes to fill. I repeatedly told her not to be concerned with filling my shoes, but to keep her own shoes on and to make her own mark by taking the office to the next level. I knew she'd be able to do it because of her computer skills and social media knowledge, both of which would come in handy with the city's scheduled 2020 computer system upgrade and entrance into the realm of social media. Stacy has met that challenge of taking the council and clerk's office to the next level. She updates the city's electronic retrieval system. She implemented council's use of Chromebooks, something that we had tried for years. She successfully enacted Zoom council meetings to keep city government connected during the height of the worldwide pandemic and beyond. She assists the manager in updating the city's website, and she implemented a digital agenda management system for city councils, city officials, and the public. And that brings us to this moment. During the interview process, Stacy was told she was required to become certified in her position within three years. The municipal clerk certification program is designated to enhance the job performance of the municipal clerk. She hit the ground running. To meet this requirement, she had to become a member of IMC, the International Municipal Clerks Association, for two years and obtain required points in categories of education and experience. For education, she attended leadership academies and a variety of courses such as public policy, parliamentary law, records and conflict management, mental health, digital citizenship, business writing, communications, ethics, and public office. Prices management, maintaining a municipal code, and active shooting training. She became active in local, state, and international municipal clerk associations, serving as an officer, board of director, or committee member. Stacy is also active in Ashtrabula City and County associations and organizations, and oftentimes attends or is a volunteer at events. The honor bestowed upon Stacy this evening is directly from IMC, as the president has said. They've been around for 76 years. They have a 26-member Board of Directors, 11 regions, two people from each regions, and four executive committee members. It's the leading professional nonprofit association whose primary goal is to promote continuing education, professional development, and certification of its 14,000 members. And those members are located all across North America, Canada, and 15 other countries. And they do this through university and college-based institutes and other educational platforms. So it's not just seminars that Stacy has gone through. She has gone through university-type classes and all other type of educational platforms. Stacy, thank you for asking me to stand with you tonight to officially recognize your achievement. To have someone who truly understands what it is you've gone through to achieve what you have is validating. There is at least one municipal clerk in every city, village, and township in Ohio's 88 counties. You are one of 95 in all of Ohio and one of 4,600 in the world who are certified. It is with great pleasure, I stand before you, and present State CS Sensky, Clerk of Council, with her certified municipal designation. And I took the time to tell you those things because it is a very important designation. It's not just a certificate. It's a certification that Stacy is able to navigate the council and city officials through anything that they need. International Institute of Municipal Clerk hereby confirms the title of certified municipal clerk upon Stacy Sensky, CMC, who has completed the requirements prescribed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks for certification, and it's certified the 23rd of November, 2021. Congratulations.
I'd also like to present Stacy with Through the Lens. It's captivating, the beauty of Ashtrabula County is the most recent pictorial book that was done by James Mayer, James Mayer of Wells Fargo.
Oh.
Yes. And so it's beautiful pictures of Ashtrabula County.
Thank you.
Yes. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So to the members of City Council, it's President, Master Municipal Clerk Henigan, and the people of Ashtrabula. I thank you for this presentation. My thoughts this evening remind me of something one of my personal heroes, Eleanor Roosevelt, once said. Everybody is an individual. Nobody can be you. You are unique. No one can tell you how to use your time. It is yours. Your life is your own. You mold it and you make it. I apply these statements in my career every day. The duties and responsibilities of this vocation are diverse and challenging and present me an opportunity both to grow in my profession and assist this wonderful community in providing a leadership that is responsive to the people, efficient in its operations, and plans for future generations. I strive daily to learn, to build, to be a team player, and assist this council in making Ashtrabula the home that we all love. I thank all of you for your support and look forward to collaborating with you and the people of our hometown for years to come.
We will continue on with our meeting at this time.
Let me get up here.
I'll let you get up here. Okay. Oh, and then we do have a request from the City Manager for an executive session after this meeting, when there will be no action taken. We would just adjourn. He has an executive request for a purchase and sale of property and for a discussion of contract negotiations. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Haynes, second by Ms. Holman. Please call the roll.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
And Mr. Roskowitz?
Yes. And that will be attended by the council members, Ms. Cooper and Ms. Welch. We will continue on with our meeting at this time with the presentation of minutes. Or approval of minutes?
The January 3, 2022, meeting of the Ashtrabula City Council was called to order at 7:00 PM by Council President Roskowitz. Councilor Mills offered the opening prayer, and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Members present, Councilor Mills, Councilor Crawford, Councilor Holman, Vice President Spielman, President Roskowitz. Counselors absent were Counselor Haynes and Counselor Foglio. Officers present were City Manager Timmanier, City Solicitor Cooper, Finance Director Welch, and Clerk of Council Sensky. Vice President Spielman moved to excuse Ms. Haynes and Mrs. Foglio from the meeting. Ward to Counselor Crawford seconded.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, who's that? Ms. Holman? Motion by Ms. Haynes, second by Ms. Holman. All in favor?
That was Ms. Mills.
Mills.
Oh, Ms. Mills, thank you. I appreciate it. It's hard with the mask, you know, so I do appreciate that. Ms. Mills? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes will stand by a five to zero vote. All right, we will now continue on with our executive reports. The City Manager at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple ordinances to request. They will be presented for passage at the next meeting, but to get them on your agenda. First, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with GPD Group of Youngstown, Ohio, for the purpose of providing engineering, design, and construction administration for the Ohio Avenue Extension Sanitary Sewer Project in an amount not to exceed $31,500. Funding for this expense will be taken from the 504 Fund, which is our capital improvements at the wastewater treatment plant.
I move on the manager's recommendation. Second.
Ms. Haynes moves. Mr. Crawford seconds. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this is in conjunction with an OPWC grant that we were awarded the last application. So now we're starting, now that we've been awarded that, now we get into the design and engineering, bidding it out, and then actually doing the construction.
Thank you, Mr. Timmanier. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a five to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with APO Horr Company in Youngstown, Ohio, for the purpose of installing the mechanical bar rake screen and screening washings and compacting. It's the base bid plus alternate two, which was hand-pull slide gates, and we need two of those, in an amount not to exceed $204,800. Funding for this expense will be taken from the Water Pollution Capital Fund 504.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Ms. Haynes moves.
Second.
Mr. Crawford seconds. Any discussion?
Mr. President, if you recall, several months ago, we actually ordered the equipment separately, and now this is to actually install that equipment. The equipment is finally here. I want to say that was close to six to eight months it took to get that built. The original equipment that we ordered, and that is now on site, $231,015. So to rebuild this bar rake, we're approaching the $500,000 mark.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that item by a five to zero vote.
Lastly, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with NOPEC of Solon, Ohio, for the purpose of accepting the 2022 NOPEC Energize Communities Grant in the amount of $31,019.
So move?
Second.
Second by Ms. Holman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that by a five to zero vote. Mr. Timmanier?
Yeah, lastly, just two items to discuss. First off, because of the weather that we had on Monday, trash will be delayed one day. So if your trash was scheduled to be picked on Monday, it'll be Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so on and so forth. Friday's trash will be on Saturday also with recycling. Just to speak about the storm a little bit, we have now seen reports anywhere between 25 and 27 inches of snow within a matter of 12 hours. We actually went in, we had crews scheduled to come in at 7:00 on Sunday night before the snow started. We got about an hour and a half of salting done prior to the snow hitting, and when it hit, it obviously, as most of you saw, it did not let up. We have been running shifts nonstop since then. Right now, we have crews scheduled till at minimum Wednesday at 3:00. We'll reassess where we're at, and we'll continue to battle from there. Just a reminder on how we do this. First, we stay on the mains. Maines would be roads like West Avenue, Lake Avenue, Route 20, the major thoroughfares throughout the city. As we get those cleaned up, we move on to secondary roads, and then after that, we get into the neighborhoods. Obviously, with the snow this hard and this fast, we were on the mains for quite a long time, which unfortunately allowed the neighborhoods to pile up. So we have been battling through the neighborhoods since yesterday afternoon and all day today. We are very, very thankful to Ashtrabula Township Road Department and the Ashtrabula Township Trustees, who lent us a hand today and did two different areas for us, which allowed us to move crews to other areas. You may have seen different reports about equipment being down and we not being prepared for that. Just to let everybody know, right now, we have six pieces of equipment, snow plowing equipment, that is actually out there on the road. During the storm, it wasn't anything pre-existing. We had two trucks that went down. Leaf springs broke on them as they were rolling around. One happened on Sunday, one happened on Monday. Our truck 46, which is one of our newer trucks, has an electrical and mechanical issue that we discovered last week. We have been trying to get that scheduled to go in. It now has to go to a dealership in Erie for those repairs. So that's supposed to go out tomorrow, although a tow is necessary, and of course, all the big rigs have been busy with all of the other big rigs that they've had to tow during these last two days. So we're still hopeful to get that out there by then. The other two trucks we've sent locally, we should have those back within the next day or two to fix those leaf springs, again, depending on parts availability. In addition to that, we have three other trucks. They're smaller. We have two 1 tons, one that does have a salt spreader on it, and then we have a Ford F-250 that we use mostly for parking lots and different things like that. But those trucks have been utilized as well. I bring that up because even with just the six pieces of equipment that we have out there right now, during the day shift, we have five employees that can go out and plow. We have two what we consider floaters. They're staff that work in our traffic division and staff that work at the garage. They can jump into trucks if need be and have them out there. And at night, we have four guys on. Remember, we do have two shifts. We run from 7:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon. Then from 3:00 to 11:00 is considered second shift. We don't have anybody on during that time. And then our night shift comes in from 11:00 to 7:00. This helps us because what we end up doing is extending first shift till 7:00 PM, and then we bring night shift in at 7:00 PM. So we have 24-hour coverage there. And again, they've been on since Sunday at 7:00. Some of the employees after this night shift will be at 48 hours already this week. So they are out there, they are working. We do understand everybody's frustration on this. We have those same frustrations. It has taken a lot, a lot of time to clear this much snow. This is a snowfall you usually see over an entire season. We got it all in 12 hours. And if you look at the maps, we got it all. I mean, we were number one, and you saw in the national news, and a lot of them even pronounced Ashtrabula, right? Which was nice to hear for a change. But again, you know, we're coming first for COVID. Now we're coming in first for snowfall. Again, like I said, I'm not trying to downplay this at all. We do understand that people need to get out. We understand people need to get work. We are doing everything we can. We're throwing everything we have at this. I've talked to my counterparts in both Geneva and Conia. They're experiencing the same types of issues, trying to get things opened up. We're hearing already that not only north of 90, but south of 90, there are some school closures for tomorrow. Check with your local district to find out if those are happening. So it'll give us a little bit more time. The biggest issue that we're having right now is where to put all the snow. You see some of these corners and along the sides of the roads, it's been hard to even push it back to the curbs. But the intention right now is the overnight crew, the crew that's on right now, just came on at 7:00, continue to plow through these neighborhoods. We want all the roads hit by morning so that tomorrow, which temperatures are supposed to increase, we can continue to push things back and salt all the roads. We've instructed the guys to use salt everywhere. We'll continue cleaning everything up so that Wednesday night, right, today's Tuesday, so tomorrow night, we can start trying to remove piles off of Main Avenue, off of Bridge Street, off of some of these corners. We're working with the school district to identify some areas where a lot of their kids meet for bus stops, so we can try to make those areas safe for those kids in the morning. We realize that with the amount of snow out there, people are still begging for private plows to come to their driveways, which means they're certainly not shoveling sidewalks at this point. It's almost impossible to keep up with what's out there right now. So again, we get it. We got all the calls, the angry ones, the concerned ones. And again, I'm not trying to downplay that at all. You know, I wish we could get it done faster, but with the nature of this storm, it was extremely intense. And there were times where our guys couldn't see the plow in front of them with the way the snow was coming down. So I appreciate all their work. Again, I appreciate Ashtrabula Township for coming out, and I do appreciate everyone's patience on this. We're getting through it, and hopefully by tomorrow morning, everything will be at least passable, and we'll continue to push things back, but we'll be cleaning up for the rest of the week.
Any comments or questions from counselors? Other, like I said, the speed at which the snow came. You know, this summer, we had all that six inches of rain and two... had all that six inches of rain in two hours, and this seemed to remind me, so much snow in such a quick time. And so I, I don't know, I, hopefully that's not the way it's going to be from now on.
I hope so, too.
But, geez, okay. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Um, no, that's all I have from my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cooper?
I have no report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to go over, the first part of my report is going to be on the twenty twenty-one year-end financials. The city ended year twenty twenty-one with a positive, with positive fund balances overall and more than two point three million unencumbered carryover into twenty twenty-two in the general fund. The large carryover balance, I'm sorry, I had to, I can't talk with that on. The large carryover balance is the residual effect of reallocating a large portion of the fire department salaries and insurance from the general fund to the coronavirus relief fund. This fund was established from one point nine two one million received in twenty twenty from the CARES Act. Also, income tax revenue came in better than anticipated, collecting seven point one million for the year compared to the six point four million budgeted at the beginning of twenty twenty-one. Because we were not sure how the pandemic was going to affect our city, we budgeted very conservatively at the beginning of twenty twenty-one as well as for twenty twenty-two. The general fund does supplement several other funds to eliminate fund deficits in twenty twenty-one. There were transfers from the general fund to other funds, which included the police levy fund for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, street lighting assessment fund, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, food service, forty thousand, public health nursing services, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, probation, twelve thousand, housing code enforcement, a hundred thousand, fire pension, a hundred thousand, and police pension, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Basically, these special revenue funds are not self, they, they can't withstand by themselves, so the general fund has to supplement them to keep, to offset whatever they don't receive from property taxes. Okay? The health department received a hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars in COVID relief grant money in twenty twenty-one, which covered all of the, the department's overtime and a portion of the nurses' salaries. The park levy fund carried over two hundred and ninety-two thousand nine ninety-two unencumbered for improvements to be used in twenty twenty-two. The paving levy fund carried over four hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven twenty-nine unencumbered for road reservicing in twenty twenty-two. And lastly, funds two twenty-five, which is sanitation, five oh three, which is wastewater, and five oh four, water pollution capital, are funded through user fees. Sanitation ended the year with a concerning hundred and ninety-four thousand three twenty-six unencumbered balance, while wastewater and the water pollution capital ended the year with one point seven five million and nine hundred and twenty thousand eight sixteen unencumbered respectively. A lot of figures, but I did send these, this to you in a full report, so you could review it. And if you have any questions after tonight, you're more than welcome to email me or call me, and I can fill in the blanks for you. Does anybody have any questions based on what I've read so far?
I do. I, I have a question on the word concerning. We have almost a two hundred thousand dollar balance, but you used the word concerning. You're thinking that's too low, or?
Yes.
Mr. President, so I can, I can elaborate a little bit. So if you recall, last meeting, we had a twenty-seven thousand dollar repair on the trailer, the compact trailer. Now, this is the carryover balance. That was before that expense. I also mentioned to you that we need to purchase a new compact trailer, because this one's, end of life is coming around, and that's going to be ninety to a hundred thousand. So now you're at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand of that carryover. And again, we, we, if we are going to consider anything to do with finishing off the recycling program throughout the city, we've got to start planning for that. As I've mentioned, we're looking close to about two million dollars to do that. Grant availability in one year is about two hundred and fifty thousand of that. So we have to get to a point where we have that kind of money behind it before we can apply for those grants and finish off the recycling program throughout the city. And that is a goal within the next, quickly, I, I don't want to say years, but we, we need to get that done, because I think, I think that will help not only expenses in the department. It's, it's a big outlay upfront, but I, I do believe that is a, a well, it's, it's, it's worth doing. We just, again, are trying to stack grant upon a grant to try to get this done, but we also need to have the cash there to do it.
So these two funds, Mr. Timmerman, sanitation and wastewater treatment, these are, they're separate funds, and they could only be used for?
Sanitation.
And wastewater treatment. So, but these are like, I don't want to use the word money-making, but these are two self-sufficient?
They're, they're, they're called enterprise funds. But yeah, the, the making money part is so that you can invest back into it.
Back in and keep it going.
The ending balances that we have, especially in the capital improvement of the wastewater, the nine hundred thousand, you just approved two hundred and four of that.
Right, yeah.
And during the year, a lot of things come up down there. So, and again, once we start looking at the capital improvement plan, that's being, the study that's being done right now, that, that dollar amount is going to be, isn't going to touch.
It's going to go down. Okay. All right, thank you.
Excuse, Mr. Manager, I, I do want to say, I want to correct you on one thing. The two hundred and four, it's already budgeted for next year. So it doesn't include that, not, it's not in that?
Right, but I guess we budgeted for it, but that carryover balance?
Is part of the whole.
Beginning of the year.
Right, right.
So this is coming out of that carryover balance.
Basically, yes. But we've already budgeted, so.
I do have a question about your comment with regard to the recycling program. And I know you're thinking about monies set aside needed to continue the recycling. If those monies aren't set aside or something unforeseen should happen, will the existing wards continue the recycling program?
Yeah, so the, the recycling program that's in place right, when I, when I say the funds that we need, it's actually to get it, to purchase the equipment to do it. So it's the purchase, the toders for garbage and the toders for recycling, which amounts to about five hundred thousand dollars. And then we need to, we need to get new trucks, because in order to do this citywide, we're going to have to pick up garbage and recycling at the same time, which means we're going to have to go to those armed trucks. It's a good thing to go to anyways. It saves on wear and tear on equipment, it saves on wear and tear on our employees picking up those big toders, and it actually allows us to put people in sanitation in, in different areas. But we need probably four trucks to do that, three to four trucks to do that, and you're talking over two hundred thousand dollars per truck. So I think the trucks that we bought last time were two hundred and fifty thousand. Going to these armed trucks is going to be in that neighborhood, if not more, especially with everything that's going on right now. So four trucks, you got a million dollars in, in trucks right there. So one point five, when you add the toders into it, I think it costs us about thirty to forty thousand dollars to deliver them all. So I say two million as a rough number of what we need to, to, to get all the equipment. Now, the county solid waste district helps us pay to get rid of that. It's actually, all of the county's recycling is brought to the transfer station in that building that sits out front on West Twenty-Fourth Street. It's compacted in there and put in a trailer, and there's a contract actually to bring it to Twinsburg. That is all paid for through the county. So we don't have any costs except for manpower loading that trailer for them, and then our guys picking up the curbside recycling as it is, but we've been able to do that with, by moving some routes around to pick that up. Going to the new trucks and going citywide, it shouldn't be an issue adding any more hours to our day or cost to our day. Now, if the county ever came along and said, we're not paying for this anymore to be taken away, then we would have to reassess the entire program, because there would be cost then to ship it out to Twinsburg.
Thank you. That's certain, that's not the case currently.
That is not the case currently, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the manager? Oh, and Ms. Welch, you're going to finish your report?
Uh, yes. I do have two legislation requests. I am formally requesting ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero four to create new fund eight oh three JED one Sabrook Township Route twenty and transfer carryover to said fund in order to implement an audit recommendation.
Move on the finance request, financials request.
We have a motion by Mr. Crawford.
A second.
Second by Ms. Mills. Is this a new, uh, this is just, this isn't like a new business or anything, it's just a change in the fund? Okay.
It's, it's separating, there's two, two JEDs connected that should be separate, all in one fund. So this is just form, this is just separating and breaking everything out.
All right, very good.
And what's the purpose of this audit?
Our, our audit, we, we have to fulfill an, a yearly audit. It's a requirement by the state. And I, I, you can find our financial audit information, our documents, everything as far as our financial statement, it's on the state auditor's website. You can search for it, gives you all the years that we've filed. But I'm, basically, I wanted to, I took a, in the audit report itself, it says, as part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the city's financial statements are free from material misstatement, Charles E. Harris, which is our auditing team currently, they perform tests of its compliance with certain provisions, with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, noncompliance with which could have a direct and material effect on determination of the financial statement amounts. So basically, they come in, they audit the previous year's financials, and they determine whether or not we are reporting in compliance and are not, we do not have any material misstatements that would cause issues to create our financial statement, which would show our, our financial statements to be weak in any manner. Does that make sense?
So if, I can, I can.
Sorry.
Kind of make it a little bit.
You're gonna.
Yeah, so it, the JEDs that we have out there, joint economic development agreements, and that is when we provide sewers to, sewer treatment in any of the townships, okay? Any new connections because of the new city-county sewer agreement that was negotiated before I got here and before, actually, I think all of us got here? You might have been on the county's side of the table at that time. So when that was put into place, there was a Perrysburg decision in the Ohio Supreme Court that basically said, in the city of Perrysburg, or Perryburg, the township, one of the two, basically said if a municipality is providing that kind of service, the municipality can just annex that property, and that township would go away. So there was a ruling that said that. So when the city, when that came down, a lot of municipalities went out there and said, well, we're going to annex this area, we're going to annex that area, and things started happening. It just so happened it was time for the city-county sewer agreement to come up, and the agreement that's in there is any new taps that are outside the city, in the townships, that still flow to us, they would have to enter into this JED agreement. And what that allows is an income tax to be charged on the business and the employees, and then that income tax is split between capital improvements and, at our wastewater treatment plant for administration, and then between the township and the municipality for our general fund uses. What this is doing is we had all our JEDs in one account, so I'm using a number, I don't know if it's, say it's the two oh four fund. I don't know what the JED fund is right now, but this is basically saying, okay, the Ashtrude Township JED is now in this numbered fund, the Sabrook Township JED is now in this numbered fund. So it's more transparency more than anything of, this is how much we receive for this one, this is how much we receive for that one. Instead of it all being in one fund, now the auditors can go in and say, okay, you collected this in Sabrook Township, you distributed this out to Sabrook Township and to your different departments, we're good, rather than having to look at that one fund and break it all down and determine who got what and where it came in from. It's just more of a, a, more transparency by adding a different account.
Ms. Holman, then I apologize if I, I, maybe I misunderstood what you were asking me, but I thought you were asking me what the purpose of, of an audit, why we have to be audited. That's why I answered the way I did, where the manager was answering according to what the purpose of the JEDs were and why these funds are being switched out, so.
And both of your responses were very helpful.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that item to our agenda by a five to zero vote.
Okay, and lastly, I am formally requesting ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero five to make supplemental increases and or decreases to appropriations in the general indigent alcohol treatment idiom court special projects sanitation and parks and rec funds for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Ashtrude, state of Ohio for January one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So move?
Second.
Ms. Holman has a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that item by a five to zero vote. Anything else, Ms. Welch?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Sinski?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment the note on the calendar that I sent out with your agendas. The Finance and Personnel Committee did cancel their meeting for January, and also the Administrative Review Board is holding a hearing on Wednesday, January twenty-sixth at five PM here in council chambers. Aside from the general busyness of my normal routine in my office, I'm organizing additional training for the counselors on assorted topics. I know how excited you are. The transition to using the Chromebooks during the meetings made me realize the need for training. The counselors, some counselors may need training to make the best use of those Chromebooks as a tool for a regular basis and not just during meetings. You're, you know, you're at home with them, and you can use them at home for, for tracking calls, for managing documents that I've sent, all different things, and we're going to figure all that out. I, I did submit the article to the International Institute of Municipal Clerks on behalf of the Records Management Committee that I'm on, and they have, I don't know when they're going to publish it, but as soon as they do, I will share that. This week, January twentieth, I'll be traveling to New Albany, Ohio, where I will be sworn in for a three-year term as a city board member of the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association. As a board member, I am required to attend four meetings per year, one of which will be during the OMCA Annual Institute in July. This July, the institute's being held at Sawmill Creek Resort, which I think is Cedar Point.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Cedar Point.
COVID's presented, prevented me from attending any of these professional conferences, and so I'm really looking forward to taking advantage of the networking and the educational opportunities. I haven't met very many of my profession around the state. And then the seventy-sixth IIMC Annual Conference in May is located in Little Rock, Arkansas. I did submit for a grant to cover the cost of the conference registration. I will find out about that. They're closing up submissions on January thirty-first, so I should find out early February if I am able to receive that grant. And then one thing I want to note, that last year, I did submit a grant and won the Jim Tinning Online Learning Scholarship, which I did use to offset educational expenses to achieve my certification. Thank you.
Ms. Sinski, if at all possible, could you vary the time that you make available so that those of us who work full-time jobs could potentially attend?
I will try to do that. If I cannot. I will try to do that. If I cannot, what I'm hoping for is, the gentleman I spoke with, um, just recently, um, he, he and I had a meeting on Zoom, so I'm hoping that if, if I, depending on how much it costs, if I can, um, get him to, you know, record a Zoom type of a conference, and then, and then if we have any additional questions, hopefully there'll be some kind of follow-up that I can work with him on. Um, but I definitely know that, um, with the past two years, um, how everybody's schedule is different, so it is difficult to try to schedule things like this, but I am hoping to be able to offer more than one opportunity or else be able to do something, um, virtually.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? I would just say kudos to Ms. Sinski for continuing to try to move us to that electronic age. Some of us are not, some of us are not on the bus. We're gonna get there, though.
Yes, you will.
I probably won't, but it, no, we will. But, uh, we do appreciate all that, uh, okay. Anything else, Ms. Sinski?
You'll be okay.
I'll be okay?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, we have a committee report this evening, um, economic development and community development.
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes. So we had met, um, I'm, as, as, uh, Tracy pointed out, there, we do have a encumbered fund still in the Parks Board, so the Parks Board, or in the Parks levy, I'm sorry, um, they, they did sub- submit with, you know, places where that money could be spent. Um, at the Topki Courts, benches for spectators, at Clifford Caden Presidential Park, uh, basketball court and pickleball courts, Smithfield Football Soccer Field, Basketball Court, exercise equipment, resurfaced walking trail at Walnut Beach, um, reconfiguring the boardwalk, um, so there, there is, there's a long, there's a long list of wishes for, for use of that money. Um, we are advertising for a new concession ear for Walnut Beach. I know it's been in the newspaper, so if anybody out there in the listening audience, we are looking for a new concession ear. Um, there is a, an opening on the Parks Board. It is a manager appointment that is opened, and there was a couple pieces of legislation that has to go through here from, from the meeting. Um, this is because I don't have my glasses on, because I can't see, because they, they'll fog with a mask. Let me just find this. Um, so
I believe it was electing of
Right.
Officers, yeah.
So that
There's two.
There was two. Electing of officers, um, there was a motion that the language of the codified, codified ordinance, um, would be changed, that the, the board would elect officers. They would specify how often, how often officers were to be selected.
I will, yes.
So we need a motion here to carry that forth.
Correct.
I will move on the, uh, on the Park Committee rec, or the Economic Development Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oskovic, second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? Basically, it's about, uh, changing officers every year, having elections for the officers at the beginning of the year as opposed to, you know, not, so this will be a change. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That has, does that need to go on our agenda or does that just pass?
No, then, um, I'll, um, submit something to Ms. Cooper for these legislative, for the next meeting.
All right, so we'll add that to our next agenda by a five to zero vote. Thank you.
So the, the other change that needs to take place, it, it is, cur, they, they meet the first Tuesday of each month, but I think it is reflected in our ordinances that it's the second Tuesday, so we need to change that as well.
I will move on the recommendation to change the date of the meetings to reflect, to change the ordinance to reflect what is actually happening.
Mister, Mister President, actually, I think the recommendation was that the committee, um, would decide at their organizational meeting what date and time they would do each year.
Okay.
So if you could write the language in the ordinance to reflect that, that gives them the flexibility of not having to come back to council every time they want to do a meeting change.
All right. I will make the recommendation that the, uh, Park and Recreation Committee pick their meeting in times at the beginning of each, uh, year.
Second.
Second by Ms. Haynes. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will have that drawn up by a five to zero vote.
So our next meeting is February 8th.
Thank you. And Mr. Timmer, I, that got me thinking, I'm wondering about some of our other committees, like Planning Commission, Architecture, if we need to look at that, uh, you know, uh, change, uh, some people may want a chance to be an officer or
We can, yeah, I think, I think, uh, as we start the new year and these committees get together, that's a subject we can broach, and then we can, uh, with Ms. Sinski, go look through the language in the ordinances and see, um, if any of those need to be changed.
All right, thank you.
Mister President?
Yes.
Is it okay time to ask a follow-up question to the report?
Sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm just wondering, this is a process question, um, how is it decided which parks get attended to?
What do, I don't understand your question.
Um, so in the document, I read, um, that there's a plan to plant more trees, um, to do some beautification around the park, so my question is like, who, how is it decided where the plants go? How does it decide which parks, you know, get attention or get renovated or repaired or whatever's needed?
So what the Parks Board is, is an advisory committee. There, these are just suggestions from them. It's, it's, it's really, um, I guess, it's, it's really the manager.
So, uh, that, that's correct. The Park Board comes up with advisory stuff. Um, we also are looking at our parks to see what needs to be done in them. Um, and anything over $10,000 has to come to council for approval. Um, most of the time, any of these plans would, would come through council in the form of going to the Economic Development Parks Committee or going through the Park Committee itself. And also, in our codified ordinances, any addition to any parks has to go through the Planning Commission as well. Um, so if there were a project where, um, for instance, with the, uh, the boat decoration that was installed by Mr. Humphrey down on the beach, um, to accept that donation, we had to go through the Planning Commission, then we went through the Park Board, and then council ultimately accepted that, that donation. So it's a process similar to that. In all in all, the, um, Park Board has determined that Clifford Caden Park on 58th Street, Walnut Beach, Smithfield are like the big three, and then, um, Missouche Field because of, uh, the constant use that it gets all summer with softball leagues and baseball leagues, it's kind of the fourth park. That's where the majority of the effort is put into, uh, and as we've discussed, and it was in that meeting also, um, we need to start looking at some of these smaller parks that really aren't worth much and start divesting ourselves of them.
And, and will that, um, decision be, um, made in collaboration with some of the residents where those parks are located?
Yeah, the, the ultimate goal with some of those properties would be to find an organization willing to actually do a better job than we are with them, or, or that it's closer in proximity. So for instance, there's one park that's near an AMHA property that they're actually interested in, uh, to benefit some of their residents and the neighborhood itself, and they would be able to do a much better job with it than we would. So any kind of transaction, though, would again have to be approved by council. I can't transfer, uh, property without your approval. So there needs to be, um, an overall plan, which the Park Board helps come up with, uh, but then my staff is also working on some different things with the grants that we know that are coming up uh, for different improvements in the parks.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Mills?
Yes, um, Mister President, Ms. Haynes, um, I was just gonna kind of reiterate the lifeguard situation we talked about at the meeting.
Yes.
Just so folks know that there might be some folks out there that might be certified or want to get certified, um, at the YMCA, but there's a big need for that, and the budget's gonna change a little bit with that because it costs more to get folks to do that. So, um, if there's anybody out there, um, there, there is a need for that. Summer will be here soon.
Thank you, Jody.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Just the last thing, uh, Ms. Ms. Haynes mentioned, the, um, RFQ, the Request for Qualifications is out there for the concession stand. That actually is on our website, too. Uh, if you go to the manager's office on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see, uh, RFQ bid and RFQs. I think that's what it's called. If you click on that, the concession ear, uh, the packet is there for, uh, you to view and submit to my office.
Yeah. Hopefully we'll get a good vendor that wants to go down there. I'm telling, uh, breakfast on the beach would be a big item. And, uh, so who's ever considering that may want to do that. Okay. All right, uh, the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting has been canceled for this week as Ms. Sinski has told us Public Works.
Uh, Public Works has their first meeting of the year scheduled for next Monday, January 24th, and 5:00 PM right here.
And Mr. Crawford, who's on that committee beside you? You and?
My fellow councilpeople, that is Ms. Holman and Ms. Mills.
Oh, Ms. Holman and Ms. Mills, okay. I, I think I, I mean, I know that's written down somewhere, okay.
And you're more than welcome to come anytime you'd like.
I am gonna come, because I have a project I'm gonna work on. And then the next meeting for the Safety Forces, who's the vice chair of that committee?
It's Kim, isn't it?
Kim, oh, and she's, and so they're both gonna, so, and I think I'm the third member, so that meeting will be Monday, January 24th at 8:45 AM. Okay, so those are our upcoming meetings. All right, we have some legislation to deal with this evening. If anyone would like to address these legislative items only, if you want to talk about another issue, we will do that at the end of the meetings. We have Resolution 2202 honoring Koski Construction Company for 100 years in the city. A hundred years, they started in the city. An MOU, which means?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Memorandum of Understanding with the council clerk, with the clerk of council concerning her salary. We have to create a new fund 803 for the Jed One District in Sabrook Township. That has come from our finance director, and the supplemental budget appropriations, which has also come from the finance director. If anyone would like to, uh, address any of those four items only, you may do so now. I do have a letter that has been asked to be read by Counselor Foglio, um, at this time, so I will do that. Uh, first and foremost, I would like, this is Councilman Foglio. First and foremost, I would like to say I'm very proud and pleased with our clerk Stacy Sinski. I feel she has done an excellent job serving our city council in the city of Ashbilla. What I say has in no way to do with her performance or with her personally. Council is set to vote on a $7,000 raise for Ms. Sinski. She has completed her Certified Municipal Clerk certification in November 2021, before her two-year period, which was part of her original contract. Also part of her contract was the promise of a salary adjustment. The city council did offer Ms. Sinski a generous salary adjustment in December, which, for her accomplishment, which she respectfully denied. This city council was rushed through an executive session to discuss Ms. Sinski's raise right before the holidays, and was not given time to look at the salary of other city employees who have comparable qualifications and who have been employed with the city for many years. I feel the rush to give Ms. Sinski her raise is not a pressing issue at this time. Seeing as her contract is not up for renewal, we can't wait as we have other employees who contracts are up and need to be addressed at this point. I have always prided myself in watching the city's checkbook and doing what is fair. Last year, we took a stand against the judge for awarding her security guards a dollar an hour raise for the COVID duties while other employees were taking furlough hours and the union was postponing negotiations. It would be hypocritical for me to support a 15% raise for one employee. I believe, uh, I believe this, that this $7,000 raise at this time is too substantial. I do agree that Ms. Sinski does deserve a salary adjustment, but a more appropriate dollar amount with respect to other employees' wages, longevity, and our city's financial picture would be more suitable. I thank you for reading my thoughts and comments, and I will respect the council's vote. So that was from Ms. Uh, Ms. Foglio. Anyone else who would like to comment on any of the four items at this time?
Mr. Oskovic? I would. Um, I thank Mrs. Foglio for her letter. Um, I want to make sure, though, that, um, she's providing the correct information. Um, according to my contract, originally in 2019, I had a three-year period in order to get certified. Um, it actually took me just over a little, a little over a year and a half, just so you know and can understand, um, how hard I worked to get it. This is not a raise. This is a merit increase. The raise is what we get, um, in January, that every employee receives, and that every employee should receive. I think it's being negotiated, again, this evening in executive session. Um, my contract is not up for renewal, but as it was written in my contract, I would receive additional compensation upon becoming certified, which again was in November, not in January, but November of 2021. And when I factor a very, um, conservative estimate like Ms. Welch and Mr. Timmernirju, I work an addition, maybe, um, I, I, I factored in one hour per day extra as a estimate of how many hours over 40, um, each week that I work. As was explained, um, and is known by Mrs. Henigan, um, and all of council, there's, there's a lot more, um, hours that really go into what we as clerks do. With this raise, as Mrs. Foglio calls it, merit increase as what I call it, I will be, based on that 45-hour work week, I'll be making $23 per hour, and it's really, it's not even 23 when you consider how many extra hours I do work. Um, and I think those are the points that I wanted to make in regards to Mrs. Foglio's letter.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sinski. Okay, so we have four items to vote on this evening. Uh, Ms. Sinski, will you read the items for us?
Yes. Resolution number 2022-02, a resolution honoring Koski Construction Company for celebrating 100 years in business. Ordinance number 22, 2022-03, an ordinance authorizing the president of city council to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the clerk of council to increase her salary. Ordinance number 2022-04, an ordinance to create a new fund, number 803, Jed, for Jed One Sabrook Township Route 20, and transfer carryover to said fund in order to implement an audit recommendation. Ordinance number 2022-05, an ordinance to make supplemental increases and/or decreases to appropriations in the general indigent alcohol treatment, IDIAM, corp special projects, sanitation, and parks and recreation funds for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Ashbilla, state of Ohio for the period January 1 through December 31st, 2022.
Is it council's desire to handle these four items in consent agenda format?
I'll move on that.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will handle these four items together. They have been read to us. I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the legislation in its entirety. So move?
Second. Second.
Second by Ms. Holman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the legislation in its entirety. I will have a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Haynes. Second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio, or Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes. And now on the passage of the four items?
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes. So, on the waiving of the two readings and on the passage of these items, both were handled by a five to zero vote. Is there any unfinished business before council?
I do have a question.
Yes.
I think it was the last meeting, maybe it was the pre-council, I'm not sure. I brought up the fact that the council adopted the resolution that stated racism was a public health crisis and committed to council for signing off on that. And we were going to take some next steps. So the question is, at what point in time do we discuss? Or take up those next steps as unfinished business?
Did you send us something on that?
I did.
Yeah, I believe Ms. Sensky sent us some information on that. And I'll be honest with you, I'm behind on my reading. So I, I think that's a good thing. Maybe if we take next week or so, or, you know, anytime, we could read that and begin discussing it. And unfinished business, new business. So, I will admit, I haven't read it yet. But anytime, Ms. Holman, and I think that's a good idea, that we do go on to the next step.
Are we all in agreement on that, though, or...
Well, I think we'll bring it up and we'll discuss it, and then we'll... I know when that resolution passed, I think there might have been a no vote or two. But, you know, but we will go on from there and have our discussion. Certainly, we are free to discuss. Any counselor can bring up any item, pre-council meeting or at this time of the meeting. And any counselor could bring up any item for discussion. Any other new business?
Mr. President, I just wanted to reiterate a thank you to the city and also the township for the plowing. I did have numerous calls. And before I got here, I had a couple thank you. And there was a gentleman that was on Dwight Avenue, which is on the other side of the Spring Street Bridge. And he described it like the Calvary coming down through when he got plowed out. So he just really wanted me to thank the city, the employees that were out there and all those hours. And then I just had some text for the meeting started. There's some families over on Riverside that were celebrating, you know, thank you. So, and I know they're getting everywhere to all the wards and especially the alleyways, too, because I got lots of calls on that. So, you know, the city is aware and we care about all the streets. And that does include the alleys. So, I just wanted to thank you.
And Mr. Timmerman, I'm sure we'll pass that on. I know that, today I watched the garbage guys, or the sanitation guys go down the street. Some of the cans were, you know, buried in where the plow went by, and they were fooled with... I was sitting there thinking, man, that's gotta be a hard job today. So he, I know he always passes those sentiments on, and we, they're appreciated. Does anybody have anything for tell us something we don't know?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, just wanted to let everybody in the city know that down in the Save-A-Lot Plaza, right next to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, a new store opened up, it's the Harbor Copy Center. So if you need anything copied or anything, she would be more than welcome to help you get what you need done.
I had that note, too, Mr. Crawford, good deal. Yes, the Harbor, and when Office Max closed, I thought, oh, you know, because I used to go down to that center a lot. And so I'm so excited, the lady who worked there, Ms. Hatcher, I believe, right?
Lisa Hatcher.
Yeah, and so she is, I'm very excited about that. And I, and I want to compliment her for her initiative and her willingness to do that. I think it's gonna be a good thing to have. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I do, too.
Just for a tell us something we don't know. I hate to admit this, but yesterday, Martin Luther King Day was the 11th consecutive date that I had to send the guys out plowing. So it seems like my luck has been on the day where we should be celebrating freedom and a lot of, a lot of different things. We've had to call the guys in, men and women, to work on Martin Luther King Day. And they have, for 11 straight years, we have had a storm on that day.
Also, mine is connected to Ms. Mills. While I also applaud and thank all the city workers for plowing us out, I don't want to forget just our neighbors who do it out of the goodness of their hearts. What you don't know is that I was able to make it today only because my neighbor plowed out my driveway. Yeah, Jim Flack is a wonderful neighbor. And while, again, we appreciate the city, there are just some good people in our city who have a good heart and will do the right thing to help out our residents. So thanks to all of you who do that.
Thank you, Ms. Holman, that's good. My neighbor plowed my driveway, good. Thank you very much for pointing that out. That's very good. And Mr. Timmerman, you're right, I know about the, when I was an educator, I always used to be sort of like, man, we're having a snow day, we already got the day off. So I thought they should give us one in lieu of, but that never worked out that way. But you're right. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I shared this at the Economic Development Meeting, but I thought it was kind of cool. The Ohio Magazine, I have a subscription to that. The January/February Magazine, it has a really nice article about the Hubbard House. And I think it's Richard Dana that used to be on the board also wrote. So I just thought it was kind of nice, because I was just flipping through there and saw Ashtrubula in there, and it was very nice.
What's the name of that magazine again?
It's just Ohio Magazine. It's a nice magazine.
All right, at this time, the public is welcome to address councils on any matter pertaining to business in the city of Ashtrubula. If you would like to approach the podium, state your name, and you could have some time to share with us, with council.
First of all, thanks for allowing us the opportunity to speak. My name is Joe Zinski. My wife and I own Pretty Good Books on Main Avenue. And then, we also engage in another business called GenPro Property Services. My business partner's here as well. So we are two small businesses, and we're trying to grow our business. I'm gonna read, because I want to try to keep things straight to the point. And I tend to be all over the place, I'm a sales guy by nature, so this is what I do. Again, thank you for allowing me the opportunities to share my concerns. At 11:35 in January, I'm sorry, at 1:35 January 10th, I was notified via text message on my phone from my camera system that somebody was at my street-level entrance of my second-floor apartments, and an unidentified male was inside our building. This is a locked entry door, and the doors were open. We called our tenant, Justine, who's here with us tonight, to alert her of the situation and asked that she lock herself and her two young children inside the apartment. I then proceeded from my home in Denmark Township to 4535 Main Avenue to investigate. That's a 20-minute trip, I made it in about 12 minutes. Okay. Our tenant, Justine, was able to verify visually that a male was, in fact, in our hallway outside our apartments. And 11:50, I'm sorry, 1:50, I apologize, she called 911. 911 routed her call to the Ashtrubula City Police, who told her there was no officers available to assist her and hung up. When I arrived on site at 1:55 AM, I found a male sitting in my stairwell at the top of the stairs, smoking a cigarette. I attempted to reach the Ashtrubula Police Department and get an ETA on their arrival. The female dispatcher yelled at me about my dogs barking and how she couldn't hear me and made no attempt to be helpful, obviously where or who I was in the situation. As she indicated, there were still no officers available. I opened the door and asked the male what he was doing. He said he would leave. The unidentified male was advised he'd be waiting until the police arrived before he left the stairwell. My dogs and I assured he'd be waiting. At 2:09 AM, a female Ashtrubula City Police Officer, later identified as Officer Allen, the only reason why I know this is because I called records the next day to find out the information, because there was no information given to me, no complaint number, no officer identification, anything. She slowly arrived on scene, taking several minutes to roll up, park her car, and get out. There was absolutely no urgency to her arrival or demeanor, especially given the fact that my tenant had called 911 and stated she was afraid. When Officer Allen arrived, she was more concerned about my leash dogs than the fact that I had a male who illegally entered my building, sitting in the stairwell, waiting for her to be picked up. Per her request, I secured my dogs. Understandably frustrated that 25 minutes had elapsed from Justine's call to 911, I asked what took so long for them to arrive. She told me there was a stabbing call before, and I pointed out that had somebody, I had somebody in my building with a single mother and two small children, and any other person would have shot and killed them. Officer Allen then spoke to the male, who was clearly known to the police department. Officer Allen asked what I wanted to do with him and said all she could do was cite him for criminal trespass. I said, please do, I don't care what you charge him with. I then returned to my building to fill out a victim statement. Lieutenant Gillespie arrived, and only know this because my outside camera picked up his name on his, his uniform. And the three spoke outside. At approximately 2:25, Lieutenant left with the male and Officer Allen left the scene. Upon review of my camera footage, once they had gone, which for the record is full color and audio-enabled, the lieutenant told the male that he was gonna take him to sheets to warm up, so that he, being me, thinks we were doing something, you know, out of sight, out of mind kind of thing. As an aside, the male has been observed via camera at two other locations and three sightings since the break into my building. The evidence is publicly posted online. Per video owners, the police were notified. The reason I'm here tonight is not because of this particular incident. As it happens, we get it. The police have a difficult job, and we have some of the biggest supporters, and we are some biggest supporters. I'm here because this is a larger issue than just this incident. This was just the incident I had video proof of and the time to be here tonight to discuss it. This is not a police officer issue. This is a leadership issue. Police officers don't put on a show to appease the public. Police officers do what they're told to do. Their attitudes and priorities are that of the city and the police chief, not their own. For whatever reason, the happenings on and around Main Avenue are not a priority for the police department or the city in general. We've called multiple times, for instance, we've witnessed domestic violence calls with women asking for help. People in buildings they shouldn't be, a fire at Gage Furniture this past fall. And either the police had failed to respond, showed up late, or in the case of Gage Furniture, showed up after the building was on fire. It's my fear that somebody will be seriously hurt or killed over this lack of engagement. Business owners are not taking this lightly, and it's an open secret that calling the police is pointless. Somebody's gonna get hurt. The frustration for the police department is further punctuated by citizens being issued parking citations for parking on a broken sidewalk to unload their vehicles, while breaking and entering vandalism, public nuisance, sex, public intoxication, urinating on buildings in broad daylight, and dumpster scavenging, to name a few, go largely unaddressed and unpunished. This is becoming adversarial and not the community partnership it should be. We as small business owners are investing our time and all of our resources to improve our buildings, bring new life to the area. And it's not an unreasonable expectation that the police department come expeditiously when we call. I've attempted to reach out to the police chief's office, haven't gotten any calls back, and it's been months. I've let several officers know I have cameras, I'm willing to let them have video anytime they need it. I'm willing to help any way I can. What more can I do as a private citizen? So I'm here tonight, really, because I'm a husband, a father, a landlord, a business owner, a friend. I'm here because people count on me to keep them safe, and I'm not gonna let them down. I'm here because we love Ashtrubula, and we want it to be better. We want it to thrive and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Indeed.
Anyone else who would like to address council? Seeing none, council will have our executive session in the council room. And council, Ms. Cooper and Ms. Welch, if you would join us.
I'm sorry?
You're free to go.
Thank you, make sure you text me when it's over.
And then when we are done, there'll be no business conducted by council.